I'm just kidding.
Call the order of the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners Tuesday, November 12th, 2019 at 6 o'clock. As always, we'll start by invocation. I'll ask Commissioner Yacht to be the leadist, please.
Anyone who would like to join, please stand. Your heavenly Father, we humbly come before you tonight and ask for your leadership, guidance, and direction in the matters of the county. We ask that you give us tribal mercies on our way home. We ask all these things in your heavenly name. Amen.
Amen. Please continue standing for our pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and get the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll move on to our comments from the commissioners and our manager, and I'll start with Commissioner Morris.
Good to see everybody here tonight. Welcome. It's a good thing when the public participates in local government. If we had more of that, we would have a better local government, and hopefully we can move in that direction. I've got a meeting in the morning in Greensboro, so I'll be a little slow putting my blog out this week, but it'll be out probably tomorrow or the next day at the latest. With that, welcome to everyone, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Last chairman, Walker.
Thank you, sir. Good to see everyone this evening. Appreciate you being here. Hope you'll find your time here well spent. Had someone ask me as I was walking up this way if I rode my motorcycle tonight. Actually, my wife really discourages me from riding it after what happened. Be a week, be a year ago, a week from today. It's been a very interesting year, to say the least. Found out how tough deer can be. I was telling the gentleman that asked me if I rode it, even if I still was riding it, with that temperature and wind the way it is, it would have been a challenge this evening. I think I've rode it on times like this, but it's been a while. But anyhow, good to see all of you, and looks like winter's trying to come back. Gonna be a little on the cold side this evening or tonight. But I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman, and we're missing someone.
He's feeling a little bit on the way tonight, so.
Okay.
Commissioner Yacht?
All right, I'll keep it brief. I also like to welcome everyone out tonight. Thanks for your participation. I don't know if you're out to listen to us talk, or you just found a warm spot, so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Like the rest of the board said, thank you for being here tonight. Hope you find your time well spent, like Commissioner Walker said, and keep Commissioner Menon hauling your prayers for being out sick tonight. And with that, I'll move it on to our county manager, Mr. Oakley.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything tonight other than I welcome everyone, and I hope everyone's doing well.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on now to our public comments. And up first, we have Ms. Ellen Parrick.
Good evening. Ellen Parrick, 1095 Wheeler Smith Road, Lawsonville. I'm here to give you an update on the arts. In the Apple Gallery for November, we have Shane Sargent's photography. We had his reception last week at the opening reception for Wood to Art, which was our furniture show. Trivia Night is Thursday, 6:30 PM, so it's a free game. Everybody can come, make their own teams or bring a team. Thursday, we're fixing chili with all the fixins and desserts, and food is available for a donation to our scholarship fund. A barn quilt painting class is on November 17th, 12:30 to 4:30. You can do two-by-two or three-by-three design. There's going to be a film screening on November 20th of Uncle Otto's Truck. That is Stephen King's adaptation, and it was actually filmed in Danbury. So that's going to be held by Recavic Productions and The Arts Place. So that screening is going to be a free event, November 20th. Our next musical theater showcase is called Dreams, Schemes, and Time Machines. That's Friday, November 22nd and Sunday, the 24th. It's musical theater, and it features local community members performing songs and scenes from classic Broadway shows. Soup in a Bowl is November 23rd, 12 to 3 PM. We have gotten a few more bowls made, so hopefully we'll be able to help anyone who wants to buy a bowl. But we also have an option, if you've gotten a soup bowl from a previous event, you can bring that, and you'll have to pay just $15 for the food and dessert. We hope everybody brings a donation of a non-perishable item. Our goal is to get together 2,000 pounds of food in addition to all the money that we raise to benefit the three outreach communities ministries for the food in the county. Wild Ponies is having a creativity workshop and concert Saturday, November 23rd, same day as Soup in a Bowl, but this will be 2:00 to 4:00 PM, and then the concert's at 7:30 PM. So they're having a creative workshop that talks about how each of us has something that we do, cooking, poetry, or songwriting, that can be nurtured and can produce a spark of creativity. So this two-hour workshop will help you explore those tools and strategies to make creativity part of your everyday life. And the concert is at 7:30 PM on that same evening. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Mr. Andy Stevens.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Andy Stevens, and I reside at 157 Old Garner Drive outside King in Stokes County. My original intention for tonight was to present to this Board of Commissioners the draft resolution for your consideration declaring Stokes County to be a Second Amendment sanctuary county. Recent developments to our north in Virginia and closer to home, right here in Danbury itself, makes this a matter of importance and a critical necessity. I'll be addressing the Danbury issue at their next scheduled meeting in December, but I understand a commissioner or two is or are preparing a similar draft resolution to present to the public in the near future. I'll not steal his or their thunder here tonight. I do hope we'll see unanimous support from this Board of Commissioners for such a resolution when presented. We need to demonstrate resolve and build a strong, secure fence around our county that not only recognizes but protects the individual's right to keep and bear arms. I take delight in following the hunting exploits of our school superintendent, who has been taking time this past couple of months to teach his son how to hunt. Did you know his comments and activities might lead to his termination in some school districts around us, or his son suspended from school? I commend him publicly here tonight. We in Stokes County exercise cherished treasure and pass down our rights and heritage. That said, the troubling reaction to the sounds of freedom by elected officials in Danbury raises a new issue this board needs to consider and correct. Years ago, municipalities could forcibly annex their residents. In preparation for doing so, extraterritorial jurisdictions, or ETJs, were created around municipalities so they could dictate their rules and regulations upon the unwilling residents in the pipeline for annexation. These territories can extend a mile or more beyond current municipal limits and are contrary to representative government. In 2011, state statute corrected this injustice, and involuntary annexations can no longer occur. However, the shackles of regulation without representation linger on. It's time to relieve those of us living within the three municipal ETJs in Stokes County from this regulatory bondage. Less government is always better government, and unlike some decisions, fixing this will not cost taxpayers time. Please take corrective action so affected owners can fully enjoy the fruits of their hard-earned possessions and revoke municipal ETJ authority in Stokes County. Finally, speaking of money, there is no clear consensus on this board regarding the necessity or even purpose of a voluntary tax increase. Without a clear, concise, and unified message to present to voters, how can you expect a vote to raise taxes to succeed? Tax-friendly Mecklenburg County had a unified message, had supporters willing to spend millions promoting a similar increase, and yet lost the vote to a grassroots effort they clearly understood. They were taxed enough already. Early in this board's tenure, a resolution was offered to create a fellow commissioner censure policy. It received some discussion, and like the proposed tax increase, received no consensus of the board and general dissatisfaction from the public. It was rightly tabled. Tonight, please repeat your action and table your resolution to present a tax increase referendum for voters to consider. After all, many of you ran on a platform proposing not to raise our taxes. I'll close tonight by asking the board to do the right thing, permanently table the tax increase, and remain careful, frugal stewards of the taxpayer's purse. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Move on now to approval of the consent agenda.
I move.
Second. Motion's taken. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's nothing on our information agenda, so we'll move on to our discussion agenda. Up first, we have our tax administration, Mr. Richard Bream.
Good evening. Too many papers here. First item I got is, as always, the monthly tax collection status report. I'd like to report so far, we've collected a little over $12.8 million, or 59%, 59.5% of the budgeted amount for the county for this year. We're on pace to collect the budgeted amount, so things are looking good as far as our collection rate right now. Next item I've got is real and personal releases, less than $100. We've got three accounts that total $100.50. Next item is real and personal refunds, less than $100. We have six bills that total $263.03. Next item is real and personal releases, more than $100. We have three accounts that total $556.07. The next item that we have is the real and personal refunds. It's more than $100. I have some amended copies to hand you. It's actually not as much as the previous amount shows. We had a mobile home that was repossessed, and from further research, we found out that the property owners still owe the taxes on it because the mortgage company released a lien to them based on the condition of the home, and money's owed. So apologize for not getting that corrected before we put it in for the, submitted for the agenda, but we didn't find the information out until after the fact. The next item we've got is a late application for disabled veteran exclusion. Just have one of those this month. And then our next item is the 2021 reevaluation update. We're only 14 months away from having our 2021 revaluation in place. You know, like I mentioned in the letter, the real estate market's real strong now. We're going to see some big increases in property values, especially for homes and lots. You know, you get into some bigger acres tracts, they're not appreciating near the same rate as homes and lots, but that's just some detailed information. Like I said in the letter, in coming months, we'll be providing more details and specific areas. And the last item I've got is some information that we've put together. We've put together a PowerPoint presentation that the tax office wants to go out throughout the county in the upcoming year and do presentations to civic groups and different organizations throughout the county to let them know what's going on, the reevaluation, and then some of the other programs that we have as far as tax relief, farm deferment, and exemptions and things that one may qualify for, just to make the taxpayers aware of what's going on within the tax office. That's all I have. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Bream?
Commissioner Morris?
Hey, Richard. Good report. I have a question. Have you timed how long it'd take to give that briefing?
I have not. It'd probably take a good 30 minutes, but it's gonna be very informal, and when we do it, you know, it's gonna be, you can stop us at any point, be glad to answer any questions, go into things in detail. And I'm not really sure. I would say probably with questions, and I'll be probably looking at an hour and a half possibly, according to how much.
That's kind of what I was thinking. My thought was, it's really well done, the presentation is, and if you don't understand revow after you go through that, then you got other problems, I guess. But that's a good idea to go out and do that. You might want to have like a reduced version, because a lot of times, people ain't got that much time.
Right.
But, and put some of the slides in backup or something, but it's really a good idea. One thing I saw that I think may come up that wasn't in the presentation was, unless I missed it, there'll probably be some questions about revenue neutral and how that plays into the revaluation. So you might want to stick something in there, or at least be ready to answer questions related to revenue neutral and the requirements for that and everything when you do a revow. Otherwise, it looks good. If somebody puts some effort into that, that's good. I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Richard, thanks for being here. Good report as usual. Usually you have some positive information when you give your report. I think the collection rate is in that category where it seems to be where we would hope it would be for this phase of the process. The presentations that you'll be going out in the community to give, you mentioned service groups, civic groups, those types of things. Is there any, do you have any planned, specific places to do the presentation?
Not at this time. Basically, I was just trying to get it together and get it to the board to let the board aware of what we're planning on doing, and get the board's approval before we move forward. And once we get the approval from the board, then we would reach out to some of the Ruitons organizations and, you know, probably talk it over Jake and Shannon, any places they think that we might would benefit to go visit and do that.
I like the idea. I think communications are good. I think anytime we can get out and get into the communities and share information that gives our citizens a better understanding of how certain aspects, certain parts of our government works, I think that's a good move. Appreciate you coming up with that idea.
Thank you.
Anything in particular? You've heard me ask this question plenty of times before, but anything in particular that you're seeing now as far as your particular part of the county's operation that stands out in any way, or good or otherwise?
I think we're moving along and we're moving in the right direction, and especially reevaluation. Every reevaluation I've been a part of, I think this will be the sixth revaluation, and every part, every revaluation gets better. You learn the county more, you learn where you might have missed something before, you learn different areas of the county, and you just learn how to do a revaluation. And we've been fortunate. We've done revaluations in-house since 2001 was the first revaluation we done in-house totally. And you know, you learn from each one of them, and learn a lot from Jake and some of the other ones in the office, and we just keep plugging along, and things go pretty good.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Yacht?
Just briefly, thank you, Mr. Bream, for the report. As always, very detailed. I think it's a good idea to go out into the community, as the fellow commissioner said, and be transparent, make sure that we're communicating what the end is to this and answering any questions that they may have on the front side. So I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Richard, I want to commend you and your department. It shows right here y'all taking the extra step to get people to understand what's going on. And that's just one thing that some people don't realize here, the employees we have here in Stokes County, there's a lot of y'all see taking that extra step, teaching citizens here what's going on, and I appreciate that. I mean, you didn't have to do this. Your department didn't have to do this, and I appreciate y'all bringing it to us and actually wanting to get out there and educate some people on this stuff, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move these four items to the action agenda, November 25th. Consent?
Consent agenda.
All right. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Move on to item B, the propane vehicles. I believe we have some representatives from the whole of hot oil and propane here with us. Would y'all like to come forward here to the podium?
I guess I'm gonna be the representative.
He left you alone, I see.
They did. I looked around, and they're not here. We'll get you back.
Commissioner Morris, I'll let you lead us now here, sir.
Okay, good. I brought this up and had on the agenda for the last meeting, and there's a memorandum published. I assume most folks have probably read, but basically, just to summarize, we went on this endeavor to do some propane vehicles with Clyde in his outfit several years ago. I don't remember, I was county manager then, so I don't remember how many it was, but, and they convinced us it would be a good idea to do this, to save money and gain some other benefits as well, saving money, of course, being the key one in local government. So we tested a couple vehicles, sheriff did down in Walco, and our idea and our discussion at the time, as I remember, was that if it worked out good, we'd look at expanding the program to save more money and to gain other benefits. So we've been doing it now for several years, and we haven't revisited it until last week, so, but it's now back on the agenda to decide if we do want to expand it and go forward. And in my discussions with the sheriff, there's been no downside to the program and the kind of pilot program, I guess you would say, that we did, and it's all upside. It's all saving money, it's extended maintenance and several benefits. So what you guys told us turned out to be exactly true, as far as I'm concerned. So then, so what we need to do now, I think, is decide if we want to expand. We'd had a discussion either then, or Clyde may have talked about it later, about possibility, if we had enough business of even getting our own fueling station provided by you guys. So I guess what we need to do is, I think, you know, from our discussion at the last meeting, everybody's in favor of going forward at some pace. We've got a couple of good candidate vehicles, I think, in the fire marshal office, I believe, that we could convert, and that would be, you guys have a bunch of trucks, that'd be our first trucks, I think, that we converted.
Well, trucks are typically easier to convert.
Yeah, exactly. So from a cost and benefit perspective, I don't see any reason we don't go forward, and I think now all we need to do is decide how we want to do that. And I guess my first question to you guys would be, has anything changed since we talked about this the first time, as far as any significant change it would affect it one way or the other since we started this experiment?
There's really been no changes in the technology. There are a few more kits out there for conversions that do a good job, but not a whole lot of changes. The costs are still roughly the same. The people that we deal with locally that do our conversions obviously have more. We've converted, I myself, my truck is a 2500 HD Chevrolet. That's similar to what the fire marshals have. I think the same truck.
Yeah.
My truck is dual fuel now. It runs gasoline and propane. Basically, all of our service trucks are dual fuel, so they automatically run on propane, and if you run out, they automatically switch to gasoline. So we talked with Mike Marshall. That was an attractive thing for him because he had extended runtime for all his vehicles. So, but as I was talking about, converting trucks is much easier because of tank placement. You know, you've got a big bed to put a tank in. When you go to converting vehicles, especially sheriff's cars, there's a space consideration, and that was the difficult part. And converting the two cruisers was making sure that they had enough room for all their gear, and then they, the tank that has a sealed vapor barrier for a car is a little different, too. So the challenges are still the same for cars, but with the amount of trucks that are out there, the sheriff's department runs and the fire marshals run, that would be an easy place to start.
Okay.
And we have a lot of tanks that are already in stock that we have now that would make that a lot easier for us, because getting tanks right now, steel in general, is lead times are quadruple what they used to be, but we have several in stock, so that would be an easy thing for us to get started with.
I think what I would like to, if the rest of the board agrees, is to go ahead and do two more vehicles right away, and then sit down with you guys and work out a program to look at these lease vehicles we have. We're gonna lease our whole fleet just about here now, I think, pretty much with a couple of exceptions. So we need to figure out how we would apply this program to the lease. So we need to figure out how we would apply this program to, to the lease program that we're hooked up with. And I, I think Mike has been told that we can do that, that we just have to make arrangements, maybe to get the, either get the cars from the factory with the conversion kits on them or put them on when we get them, but it doesn't hurt the warranty, it doesn't hurt the lease, as far as I understand.
Good. And, and one thing that also, that you're going to see, the two cars that we converted, you know, I think it's about four years ago, the kits that are on those cars, let's say that car needs to be taken out of service, that kit can be removed, the car can be switched back to gasoline totally, and then you can take that kit and install it on another vehicle. So the only thing you're going to be out is going to be the labor to install the kit. You don't have to buy a new kit. So they can be transferred from car to car.
Exactly.
So there's your savings the second time around.
Yeah, exactly. And, and the, and Mike, I think, the sheriff said at the last meeting, in one year, we pay for that, so then we own it, so.
And that's what Mike had, basically, based on his numbers, that he, he told me, basically, the first year pays for the installation cost. So that's not bad.
The next question I have, and just a couple more, and then I'll let the other guys go. But the, is Ty going to be here tonight?
No, Ty had surgery today.
Oh, we did, okay.
Yeah, I heard it was saying it's supposed to be here about 6:30. I thought it was Nick.
Oh, Nick's going to be here, okay. The other question I had was, if, once we get into expanding this program, all the legal aspects of the bidding and so forth, and to make sure that we can do what we want to do with, without violating any of the, any of the procurement regulations and statutes and everything, and so, you know, I guess, I guess we'll have, we'll have to get a legal opinion on exactly how to do that. They put a thing in our package, it's the exceptions to bidding requirements, and it's got a lot of stuff in it that, that a lot of different things it may apply. One of them is fuel purchase, but then in the list of description for fuel purpose, it lists gasoline, diesel fuel, alcohol fuel, motor oil, fuel oil, or natural gas. It doesn't list propane. So I need to get Ty to tell us if, if that applies or if some of the other statutes apply, and whether, if we, if we decide to expand this, especially up to start doing things like putting in fueling stations, do we have to have a competitive bid process or whatever?
And one thing that you're going to find, and I've talked to several of you about this, the fueling station that we use is not your average fueling station. I've partnered with a company out of Texas, and Texas is probably the leading state as far as LP conversions in the nation. They have fleets of school buses, municipalities, they're huge on propane. The system we use is a high-pressure system. For the sake of simplicity, it allows us to pump quicker and put more in a car than a traditional system. At the colder it gets, the traditional systems, you can fuel a car, it may take you 30 minutes to fill it up if it's cold, but it's pumping on about 100 PSI versus our system pumps about 300 PSI. So it feels faster than a, the gas station does. However, that system is very expensive. So that's, that's the drawback. The initial cost of setting up a system of that nature is not cheap.
I think you're, where you're located now is somewhat convenient for us. I mean, it works pretty well. It, it would work pretty well for all the central part of the county, so.
And our goal as a company, YVETI already uses us as well on some of their, their dual fuel vehicles. And we would like to get a fueling station somewhere in the King area as well, possibly even here, but to cover the county and would make it more available to them as well because they've got several vehicles that are passing through that corridor, going to the hospitals, doctors' offices, and that kind of thing. So we're looking to grow that, so, you know, we're hoping to partner with you guys, possibly on that as well, to maybe get something in the King area too that we can cover the entire county.
Would we have to pretty much do our whole fleet to justify that, or have you guys done some analysis?
To justify an investment like that, you're looking at a significant amount of vehicles. You're probably looking at 50 vehicles.
We've got 150 or 60, I think.
And that's, that's a huge investment for you guys. And that may be something we can do incrementally over a few years.
Yeah, that's.
But we can talk about that, but.
Have you guys had any, any competitions or anything where you had to bid against other companies? Like, like, let me give you, for hypothetical, if we were to put an RFP out and said we want to do 50 or 75 vehicles and put in a fueling station, please bid on it, would we get bids from somebody else in the county?
You would, not, not in, not within the county, no. Now, you're going to get bids, but I'm going to tell you the difference. What we've encountered, we actually did a project for the city of Danville about a year and a half ago. Their entire public transportation fleet is dual fuel. We put in a high-pressure system like you have in Wallaco. We put it, actually put it underground because they didn't want to see it. So that was complicated, but we, Lynn and I actually built, in conjunction with a company from Texas. But they are switching their entire public transportation and are in the process of switching all of their police vehicles over to do that. So it's, it's, it's a coming thing, but the biggest thing is it's, it's expensive, but.
Well, one, for one thing, I guess we could have outside companies bid on it here, but we can't take the county cars out of the county to get them fueled.
Well, what they'll, what they'll do, and what we've run into, and we actually encountered in Danville, they had had another company come in, and they had put in a site on the other side of town. They were having a lot of problems. The problems were, most companies don't do the high-pressure system that we're installing, and that's the big thing. They were having public transportation vehicles sitting there forever, not fueling, not, I mean, you can't, they're supposed to be on the road, not sitting. So they were not able to use it like it should be. So that's the difference in high-pressure system. A lot of these companies are going to come in and quote you a system. It's a standard system like everybody has to, to fill a grill bottle. It's, everybody's fueled before. And they're fine and all, but it's very slow, and the colder it is, it changes the pressures, so.
We'd have to be careful with what we asked for then.
Yeah, and you've got to make sure you're getting apples for apples, the quote.
Nick, we were just talking about the competitive part of this thing, if we decided to drastically expand the propane thing. I got this, this matrix that you guys put in, but I couldn't tell for sure which one applied, so, we'll, we'll need to work out the legal aspects if we, we were talking about doing a couple more vehicles, but if we get bigger than that, we'll have to work out with you guys the legal aspects of whether we have to bid it or not bid it sole source versus all of that, so.
And just as a side note, our company, even though we're, we have five stores, everybody knows who haul propane is, we're a lot bigger than you think. We can do a lot of different kind of deals to help with budgets. What I would suggest, and you can take this as we get closer to things, is doing a, a cost system based on gasoline. And basically, what we would say was, was just, to use an example, I would say, okay, we could take a monthly average of the gasoline in Stokes County, and you can find it on the website all day long. And so basically, I guarantee you, we're going to save you 30 cents cheaper than that average, is an example. So let's say gas was $2.50 for the month, yours is going to be $2.20. So we can do basis contracts for a year, a six-month period, year period, we can actually go up to two years if you want to go that far. So contracting wise, there may, there's a lot of savings opportunity as well.
Okay, we just need to be very careful how we write our RFP to make sure we get all of the right requirements.
And that's going to be the sticking point for us, just because we're not going to do all this work and then have our bid took from us in a matter of a year because we won't be happy with that. So it's, that's, that's a sticky situation we'll have to navigate.
We know how to do that, so. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
So I did want to clarify one thing. According to our rep from Enterprise, Chad said that this can affect the warranties on the vehicles. So I want, I wanted to butt it out there, this can affect warranties on these vehicles. Said if any issues arise after the install, they would likely not be covered under the manufacturer warranty. And after, adding aftermarket propane outfits can affect many different components. But I'm just putting that out there just to clarify this part.
You didn't say it would affect, he said it could, right? I thought, I remembered him saying that we could, it wouldn't affect the warranties.
This is straight from Chad. I emailed him after the meeting last time and just asked him to check, and he said he checked with the National Service Department for them and their technical advisors and came up with that information. He did say that if we could give him more information on as far as like part numbers, kit numbers, things like that, he could do a little closer checking with their service department to see kind of how that would work. He'd want to just know a little more information.
And, and our dealings with something like that, typically, the manufacturer's going to say no. Okay? So what I would suggest, if we are to move forward, was to see if there is a factory-equipped vehicle, and that takes everybody's problems out of the equation. That's, that's your best option if possible. I know we have a Roush truck, it's powered by Roush, Sephora, has a Roush system, it's factory-installed. So there's, there's lots of things out there, and there's conversions too, but typically the manufacturers frown on it.
Yeah. And the thing you're asking about Ty, about the sole source, and you may answer this better, but Ty and I talked about it several days ago and came to the conclusion after looking at all that information that I put in the agenda, that just for purposes of being legal, we would have to bid it out because it's not a sole source because other people offer it. You obviously probably would be the most sensible bidding person in our area and what we're looking for, but we'd have to actually send it out to meet all the legal competitive bidding requirements, is what Ty was, Ty thought.
And I can tell you he's going to bid that more than likely.
Yeah.
Which we still have eight vehicles, it's not, or lease programs are correct?
According to the sheriff, we have eight vehicles, eight more that is not equipped with this propane fueling, and that's eight that you can move forward with now.
And we still have conversion kits that we ordered a while back that we can move on quickly to, so.
We do, and you can maybe move forward with what you already under with those, with the whole propane as far as the testing phase. Need to do more to get more data on that, so that would allow you to do that, if I'm thinking correctly, I must have, but with that said, you can do those and let us, allow us to do more research and be, and start talking with Enterprise on the vehicles that are coming in, because we've done, got like 38 in the sheriff's department, and there's where the vehicles is going to give us the biggest bang for our buck because they do a lot of mileage. And if they bring in another 15 to 20 this year in the sheriff's department, you definitely won't buy those vehicles, but they're, they're looking at getting about another 30 to 40 more cars over the next couple of years and phasing out his fleet.
Right.
To make sure that, and that's, that's where you can get the manufactured upgrades and, and if they're there.
Yeah, they are there, but I'm not sure if Enterprise is going to have a deal, I don't know all the details on that.
Right. And then, you know, there are some other trucks, bigger vehicles that, that, you know, like EMS, all emergency vehicles, that can be equipped and changed also because they're, they're high mileage.
The biggest thing we, we really don't have a solution for is diesel. There's things out there, but I'm not, to be honest, we're not comfortable with them right now. Gasoline only.
And our, and our larger, larger EMS units, they are diesel.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here. Clyde, good to see you. Been a while.
Been a while. I'll speak in just a minute.
That's all right, like you're carving or whatever you have to say. Shut it down a few questions as you're sharing the information and kind of learning some things as Commissioner Morris covered his questions. And I was, when he was manager, I was on board as a commissioner, and I helped okay or helped bring this into being initially, and have checked with the sheriff at various times to see how the vehicles were doing that are equipped to use propane, and always got thumbs up. Always said seemed to be doing fine, which has been encouraging. A little surprised that we went this long without going back and doing what we're doing now, but I'm glad his turn has finally came up again. Few questions. You mentioned 30 cents differential.
That's an example.
As an example.
I just used that for sake of simplicity.
Now, I was thinking the differential would be much greater.
And it can be. It can be. But I was just using that for, as an example.
Because at 30 cents, it would take a while to cover some of these costs that we're discussing here this evening.
It would. And that's something, we can, we can negotiate that. I was just using that as, as an example.
I understand. And, and I did hear at one point, if my memory is working reasonably well, that propane right now is about 61 cents a gallon?
No.
What is it?
It has moved up since then.
What is it now?
It's probably closer to 70, and that's before transportation costs, that's rack only.
Right.
And that's what people don't realize.
And you have to, you, there's other costs, I'm sure, that have to be added to that, but that's a good cost to start with. Sure beats that what I pay on the way over here for gasoline, $2.41. You mentioned that one way to make this simpler and easier might be to use vehicles with factory-installed systems. How does factory, if I could ask please, how does factory installed cost compare with aftermarket?
It's going to be more expensive. A conversion typically runs you anywhere from $5,000 to $7,000.
Right.
Okay? So theoretically, a factory-installed car is going to cost you more money. It probably won't be to that extent because there's, that's, they're on the assembly line making it, so their cost is going to be cheaper. But I don't know the number, but I would, I would venture to say probably about $4,000.
That actually sounds like a little savings.
It probably would be, and you'll have your warranties. That's why I suggest you pursue that angle if possible.
That's some information I'd like as we look further into this, what, what we could potentially be experiencing far as purchasing vehicles with a system already installed. It would still be, still be dual fuel, I would hope.
Well, and typically, when you buy a, a factory unit, it's going to be a single fuel.
Open only.
But you can order them dual fuel, because I'll go back to the city of Danville, they order theirs dual fuel, and YVETI orders theirs dual fuel. So it can be done.
Very good. One thing that I found very encouraging, sort of coincidental to the information you were actually presenting, but when you were talking about how hard it is, how much of a backlog there is, how much of a lead time there is for the kits now, that tells me we've got a trend going here, that folks are really jumping on this way of doing things.
It's, if you could talk to the, the folks we deal with from the company in Texas, he's, he is all over the world installing these things. And the US is actually behind the curve. He spends a tremendous amount of time in Canada, but Texas is where he's from, and like I said, they work in Texas. He just got done putting in six 30,000 gallon tanks, and I think it was three different fueling islands for a school system to fill their buses. So that's, it's a big thing.
You mentioned municipality, one in particular that's doing a total conversion. Are there other counties that you're aware of now that have done total conversions?
There's nobody that's done a total conversion that I'm aware of. I know the Burlington, city of Burlington.
In Raleigh.
Raleigh, Durham, there are several buses. A lot of, a lot of their sheriff's departments, obviously with the mileage that they run, a lot of the sheriff's departments, especially in Raleigh, are going that route. We've got a friend of ours in the propane business, he's installed several of these stations that I'm talking about for the city of Burlington and Alamance County, in that area. But it's, it's a slow, our bus, our buses typically Bluebird buses are in the forefront of the propane side of the buses, not Thomas, which is local. So Bluebird has the kind of the corner of the market on that, and I know there's state contracts involved with stuff like that. So Thomas has, has our state contract, so they're not likely to put in propane buses. So there's, there's some things going on with that, it kind of prohibits things.
So, so there's a lot of movement, it sounds like, beginning to be in that direction.
Yes, yes.
At 300 PSI, you, you referenced, at 100 PSI, these kinds of cooler temperatures like we're going to be experiencing tonight, for example, takes a while to fill, fuel a vehicle. At 300 PSI, how long would it normally take?
The biggest thing that you need to understand about propane, if you have a, a tank in a car, it's going to sit roughly at 100 to 125 PSI in a normal state, okay? And if you drive up to a fueling station, it's not a high-pressure system, it's going to sit at 100 to 125 PSI at a normal state. So those pressures being equal tells you that it's not going to fill very fast.
Right.
Okay? So what you've got to do is you've got to overcome the pressure differential. So that's why the 300 PSI pump comes into play. It's pushing much more pressure into that tank, and it's overcoming that pressure. So it feels actually faster than a gasoline pump, but that's the reason for the high-pressure system.
Right. So that's good news, it's a pretty simple operation with a high-pressure system. One thing I'm looking for is how many vehicles, given our mix of county vehicles, I think Commissioner Morris said we had 150, 60, something like that, it's down a little bit from what it used to be. How many of those vehicles would it be reasonable to convert?
Well, let's just take an average.
Ideally.
Well, let's just take an average of two thousand gallons a year per vehicle. Okay? A typical system like I'm talking about, like the one we have in Wantaco, which is almost, it's a nineteen-hundred-and-ninety gallon tank with a high pressure pump on it. The cost on that, just for the system, is roughly sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars. That's not counting the power, which has to be explosion proof because it's propane. The, it has a, this thing has cards, just like a, a fleet program that's tied to a PC. It's, uh, so you have to hardwire it to a computer in a building somewhere. There's a couple of options with that. We'll get into that later. But all that's gotta be hardwired and ran. So there's, there's other costs besides just the system itself. So, you know, you're, before you're done with this thing, you've got, depending on the severity of things, you may have eighty thousand dollars tied up in there. So you're talking, to make it feasible, that's where we arrive in anywhere from around forty, forty vehicles. Because I mean, it takes, it takes a lot of gallons to make that worth it for everybody involved.
Right.
So that's why kind of forty to fifty vehicles would be a, and I realize that's not gonna happen overnight. So.
Well, it's not gonna happen at all if we don't plan for it.
Exactly.
And if we don't get started doing it.
So if it's incrementally over the years, that's fine. We can work with that.
To help that happen, I'd like to see us put together a plan for working toward whatever that ideal number would be at some point in time and how we're going to get from where we are to where we potentially could be in the future if we do certain steps along the way.
Right.
You know, cost projections, things like the ordering of cars already dual fuel when they come from the factory, which I like that idea. I think we've got some work to do. I think it's a good thing to get started on. And I appreciate you guys working with us as well as you have to help get us to where we are right now. Very good spirit of cooperation. I've noticed that along the way and I hope it continues and hope from both ends, the county's end and your end, we can make this happen. I think in the long run, we'd be glad we did.
I think so too.
It just, it just makes sense. So what questions do we have or what information do we need as we start putting together a plan if there is sufficient, sufficient interest on the board, which I think there might be, I don't know, but there very well could be, and then moving forward with this? And I'm not thinking in terms of two or eight vehicles. You gotta start somewhere, get your toe wet, you know, before we jump in, that type thing. But I'm thinking in terms of if this makes sense to the point that it seems it does, let's go ahead and, and be moving along toward really, really getting to that forty, forty-four level that you're speaking of where things begin to happen in a good way.
Yes. And that goes back to you guys. You know, you know where your purchasing levels are gonna be. And once you find out from enterprise what you can do, what you can't do, then we can kind of proceed. That would be my first idea for you guys to find out what, what are your options within.
And what basic questions like would enterprise have a problem ordering a dual fuel vehicle from the factory? I don't see why they would. One other kind of thing that helps the situation too, the sheriff you mentioned or has been mentioned is a big user, a lot of miles. Those deputies do a lot of driving. And they're switching, I think, from sedans to some sort of SUV type vehicle.
They are.
Which would have more room, I would think, for a tank.
Well, what you're gonna find with that is they actually make a spare tire tank. Then you have to put the spare tire in the back of the vehicle somewhere, but it will actually take the place of the spare tire. It's kind of, in a SUV, that's probably gonna be your best bet. And that, the biggest thing we've talked with the sheriff's department and the deputies as we were going through this was they carry a lot of stuff, a lot more than you think. And trunk space is, is a, is a big deal to them. So making all that fit is difficult. So I think that's, for an SUV type, we have an option for that too.
And that's one of the reasons why we were converting to SUVs.
What, what I would like to request from our manager and from you folks as well is there can be some joint effort toward creating a plan that will move us toward where we really could be or probably hopefully should be for the future. And what steps we need to be taking now. Because like we were saying, if we don't get started at some point, we gotta get started to make it happen.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna stop there, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you allowing me the chance to ask the questions.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Youngs?
Yeah, following Commissioner Morris and Commissioner Walker, they're pretty thorough. So most of my questions have been answered. There were a few things that we talked about at the last meeting in reference to this and it was the, the potential for a buy head. So when the market was favorable, is there still potential for that?
There, there's always potential to, to buy. We, we buy, we buy, we hedge, we do all kinds of different buying techniques to offer. We have, we have some customers that buy a million and a half gallons from us. So we're always doing hedges, contracts, offering different supply options. So that's something as we grow that we can definitely provide you guys, that we're already doing for other folks.
The other thing I was gonna ask, and, and we talked about cost savings and, and obviously that's huge, but from the maintenance side of things, I know the sheriff touched on it briefly when he was here, but you guys obviously have run several service trucks for many years. What, what are the pros that you're seeing and the cons, if any, maintenance wise?
We'll go over the pros first. Pros are oil changes, double. You can pull, you can take my truck out there right now. It's got about six thousand miles on it on the oil change. I'll go close to ten. And when you pull the oil sample, it's still gonna look clean. The, that's a big, that's a biggie. You can stretch your oil changes out and double them, especially when you're changing oil as much as you guys do. That's a huge savings.
True.
The, that's the biggest, biggest pro, of course, obviously. The, one of the, one of the cons, and I'll be perfectly honest, it's no different than any other vehicle. There are breakdowns. There's extra lines involved with propane, regulators under the hood. Occasionally you're gonna have a line issue. The system has, it's, it's real simple. It has a little fob inside about that big and you can push a button and it goes from gasoline to propane. So if you, I've had it happen in my truck. You smell the propane. It has ethyl mercaptan in it. I've got an issue. I shouldn't smell that. Click. So we have to carry it. We have a guy that does that. He specializes in it. We carry it to him and he fixes it. So there's gonna have to be somebody probably at the, at the garage at some point that becomes your specialist. So that's a con. It's, it's a new technology that they're not gonna be familiar with, that they're gonna have to figure out. We can help you with that and put you in touch with the right folks, but it's not anything worse than what they're already doing. They're just not familiar with it. But mileage wise, there's very little difference. It's a very clean fuel, obviously. And some municipalities are now going to the point that they won't allow people to mow unless they have alternative fuel mowers. Charlotte's moving toward that. Raleigh's moving toward that. They even have contracts. You gotta have propane powered everything. So I don't know what incentives there are for municipalities, but I'm sure there are because there's incentives out there for us for doing this as well. So I'm sure there's some government incentives you guys may be able to tap to help pay for this too, possibly.
All right. Well, everything that I've heard on it and, and researched, it sounds like a viable alternative. And, and my commitment would be, as you, Commissioner Morris stated earlier, potentially just go ahead with the eight vehicles that we have that are not leased and on our county trial basis.
Right.
And then, of course, all the other things we can kind of answer in, in interim. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. First off, I want to thank, Clyde, I want to thank y'all for working with the county on this right here. A lot of people don't know, yeah, y'all are a local county, but y'all did help the sheriff's department get kind of a little test program going on with this. And I wanna, you know, thank, thank y'all for doing that. I know it probably cost y'all time and money and we appreciate it. And like Commissioner Morris and Commissioner Youngs said, I'm, I'm kind of looking more right now at doing the eight vehicles that's not on the lease program. Main thing is we just done the fleet with the new vehicles. What, you know, what damage could we do if we did convert some of these over and then something happens or we just lost the warranty? So everything we got in this lease program, every bit of money that you would have saved on this right here is now shot.
Exactly.
So I'm just kind of looking at that point. I, I would like to get with Chad and see in the future, can we go ahead and get vehicles like this that's already converted on this, as you said, and kind of move towards it in that area instead of coming out doing a lot of our fleet vehicles switched over immediately? But the whole deal with the double mileage, I might get you to do my truck now. It sounds pretty good about the oil there. But besides that, I want to thank y'all for being here tonight and we appreciate all the information y'all bring for us. And Clyde, anything you want to add to it right there at the end?
Sure.
All right, come on up.
No, I'd just like to say I, I really appreciate y'all giving us this opportunity. Eric's coded very well. I appreciate all of you doing what you've done. And it goes back a long way. My grandpa and grandma born in Stokes County. My mom and daddy born and died in Stokes County. Me and my wife from seventy-one, we born and raised in Stokes County. We bleed Stokes County red clay, if you want to say, for any other say. But we, we, we do wanna do the county a good job. We're, we're not, and, and you know as well as in, but we're not up here to say that we're gonna do this and it's, and we're not gonna make any money. We, we do. That's what we're in business for. We have twenty-some employees in Stokes County, forty-some in North and South Carolina, I mean, North Carolina, Virginia. So we're gonna do a good job. We, we do the best we can. We have good Lynn, Eric. All my guys are, are good, safe, hard workers and we appreciate this opportunity. If you can, you can call the county manager in Raleigh, call the one in Burlington. I, I've not talked to them, but you call them and you talk to them and see what they say. The, the, so far, all I've heard from them is through the power for who we get our big pumping, our, as Eric was saying, our higher pressure pumping system through. They really like it, but I would, I would encourage y'all to call them and talk to them. And they, they'd be more up with you than they would with me. You know, they'll tell you, they should tell you the truth. Just call them and talk to them and see how, see how they're doing, see how the economics is working on it, how the mechanical part of it's working on it and how the employees like it. And sometimes employees have a real problem with propane or natural gas. They have problems with gas. They, it's something they can't see and they just stand there and they, and they get excited about it or, or nervous about it, other than gasoline. But it's not, it's not a lot of difference. Propane's a liquid. Gasoline's a liquid. It's burned as a vapor. Basically, basically the same thing. But, you know, like I say, you'll have to get the people who do use it. You'll have to get them schooled on it so they know what, what to do and how to do it. It's, it's very simple. You know, if I can do it for the last thirty-one years, they can learn it too. I just appreciate all of you. Thank you and love Stokes County. See y'all.
One last question for Clyde. We were talking about this warranty stuff with a fleet like we have, where we have cars that run all the time, sheriff's department. I guess they just, one gets out and another one gets in. They keep going. It seems to me like that warranty probably be up in a year, just on mileage. So I really wonder if that's, you know, we could run until the warranty's out and then convert them or something.
Well.
Think about that. Just a thought.
What I look at in the last eight, ten years, there's not a lot of warranty work done anymore. Most, most of the cars are pretty good with solid state and all that, the computer system. The only problem you have is a computer system breakdown. And don't ask me about that. My goodness, them girls in the office, they, oh, you, you can't, no, I'm not gonna work on the computer. I'm, I'm too, too far past that stage. But that's, that's mainly the biggest problem is the solid state part of the system breakdown. Mechanically, I don't think you'll have any problem, but you know, sure as I say that, you will. But more likely you will not have any problems mechanically. It's just the, the computer system.
Clyde, real quick, if it was something like it was to happen, how much does it cost to take a conversion kit off one and move it to another vehicle, roughly?
Two, just to move one from the other?
Probably, probably in the range of.
One to two thousand?
Probably to be safe, I would say two to three. Probably not that much.
I'd say around two thousand, but we, we've never done it. See, all our trucks are, are still running on it and we've never had to change one.
It's cost involved in installing one, is mounting the tank. And how much fab work has to be done to do that? That's, that's the, that's been the problem so far.
Is that something you have to be certified in to do or?
The system that we use, you have to be certified to do that.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
I'd like to leave us on discussion for next meeting still.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that we have the county manager bring us a proposal to go ahead and fix the vehicles that we can do now and then let us approve them getting together and working out a longer term plan. It will pass the legal muster as well.
Is everybody good with that? And before we move on to our next line, we're just gonna take a short five, ten minute break and we'll resume right after that.
State Board of Elections by December the twentieth, so this is still, you know, it's just up for discussion on what, how this board wants to handle this if they do, and have a discussion on how this would be implemented. You also have the sales tax information, and you also have the Board of Education's letter of support. You also have the personal review of security, safety in items that they have entered in on a document. So with that, this resolution, it has to be done in a manner that it does not reflect your opinion on what this will be used for. It has to be done in a nonpartisan type manner to where the voters are either voting for the sales tax or not. And then it would also have to be something that the commissioners will always each year look at budgeting in specific areas for the purpose of whatever they see fit. With that, Mr. Chairman and Board members, I'm requesting something that we need to move forward with whether or not we're going to do this or not.
Does anybody like to open up a discussion?
I will, but you have somebody else can go first. I'll take it. I've been thinking about this right here a hard, and it seems like a lot of the public is really getting this confused once again with property taxes. At this point, we've been going back and forth on this, and with all the confusion going on, I'm kind of to the point right now of just balled up and throwing the trash. I see God would provide some way, some man as well go with.
I give you a different way to think about this. We've been kind of wrapped around the axle about how we would use the revenue for this tax. I think our objective was to define it in a way that whatever we said we were going to use it for would be a no-brainer for people that they'd vote for it. Otherwise, they'll automatically vote against it. But I think our concept was if you give them a good enough reason to vote for it, like something that everybody's interested in, which is school security, then it may have a chance of passing. So, you know, that's one way to approach it. The other way to look at it is to, especially if you get into what the statute says about it, where you can't guarantee how you're going to use it, you can tell people how you're going to use it, but then they can't hold you to it. So really what this is, we fund the government basically here with two taxes primarily, along with other little bits of revenue, but we fund this government with property tax and sales tax. And all this would do by adding a quarter cent sales tax, it would change that ratio of what tax we collect from sales tax versus property tax. The way I see it, you know, I'm going to have a set of requirements to fund when the budget comes up. I made it really clear in my, when I was running for election, everything else at the top of the list was school security. One thing I didn't say, but is part of that school security, we kind of automatically think of it as what are we going to do in the building, and we're going to put an SRO here or there. I think we probably, if we continue down this path, should also at least visit the safety and security of school buses along with the kids in the building. If I've got a kid going to school every day, my number one concern is they're safe while they're in the building, and they're safe while they're on the bus getting to the building. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, if I support the referendum, that's what I'm going to tell people that as long as I'm a commissioner and as long as I have an opinion, my opinion's going to be that that's what it should be used for. And if you get beyond something like SROs and then some logical, very clear logical bus security and safety kind of issue, then I'm probably really not going to be in favor of doing it, because I just really don't think people even stand a chance of voting for it if you do. So you can look at it from that angle, but like I said, you can go back and look at it, what, how do I want the ratio of my taxes to be? And I'd rather fund the government with sales tax, and with sales tax, everybody pays. It doesn't matter if you're a property owner or not. I happen to like that. That's called a regressive tax. Some people think regressive taxes are unfair. I think they're more fair, because everybody has to at least participate at some level. So that's why I think, you know, a quarter cent sales tax would be a good idea, in my own personal opinion. I'd rather have that ratio a little bit higher on the sales tax side and less on the property tax side. But when it comes down to it, when the budget comes in, I'm going to look at the request, and whatever it is I need to fund, I'm going to fund with one or the other. And I'm going to fund at what level I think I need to fund it at. That's what they elected me to do. So maybe, you know, I'm not sure how we word the resolution, but maybe we approach it a little differently and just say, you know, would you rather fund your government with sales tax or property tax? But the bottom line is you're going to fund the government at some level with the two of them combined, and, you know, and we're going to decide, you know, at what level we're going to do that when we get into the budget process. So that's my most recent thought on it. So, you know, I'm still like the idea of doing it, because like I said, I like sales tax better than I do property tax. But like I said, I don't think it stands a chance of passing if it's not something that you can make. Maybe both those arguments, that it's decide what ratio you like between property and sales tax, and secondly, decide, you know, if you can trust the commissioners to spend it on what they say they're going to do. Because if you can't, you know, you shouldn't vote for it, I guess. But, you know, and Commissioner Walker made a point at our last meeting, we've done something like this, kind of similar to it with the four cent sales tax, that was added to do all the construction and renovation of schools. And whenever we did that, we told them what we were going to spend it on, and to this date, we have not spent it on anything else, even though we looked in the past budget, you know, of expanding that, the use of it to other school-type things. So, you know, as long as you're honest with the public and tell them what you're doing while you're doing it, then I think we've got a track record for doing that so far on the four cents, and so maybe they'll trust us to do that on the sales tax. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. And I would say I agree with you wholeheartedly on that. You are correct. When it comes down to it, I'd rather play a sales tax than a property tax. But I believe right now at this time, it's already November. I just don't think we'll be able to get the information out there to the voters in time and educate some on this. I just don't want to look at wasting nobody's time on it. But Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Morris catches my attention in some interesting ways. He talks about funding all these things, but the money has to come from somewhere, and we increased our budget this past budget cycle by almost eight and a half percent. And that's a big chunk for one time, and we just keep, I don't think, keep spending money at that rate, no matter where it comes from. But my goal is and has been to make the tax burden on our citizens as light as reasonably possible. And one way it appeared to me to do this was to shift part of the taxes that it takes to run the government, which it takes, we've got to have taxes, no doubt about it. Death and taxes are about the only two certainties in life. My view towards the property tax option was to shift some of the tax burden from property owners to negative consumption type tax. I guess that would fit, wouldn't it, Commissioner Morris? If somebody buys something, they pay sales tax, and it's pretty simple, how much the tax is going to be? And let part of the taxes it takes to operate the county come from the sales tax instead of property tax. And the only way I would support it would be on that basis. If it's just a new tax added to the, placed on the backs of our taxpayers, there's no way I can support it nor can I encourage others to support it. So it may be, if I picked up on something Commissioner Morris said, I need clarification on this, I would be willing to consider a proportion where a substantial portion of it goes to shifting the tax burden of our citizens from a property tax to a sales tax. And then the other portion could go for a specific designated purpose, school security, whatever, economic development, whatever the county's, whatever's at the top of the county's priority needs at that time. But I also agree with our chairman, and Commissioner Morris said if we tell, and I've stuck to this all along very steadfastly, if we make a commitment to our citizens, by golly, we need to stick to it. And we told them that we were going to use the four cent schools tax, which I got very little pushback. I got very little citizen concerns over that, because there were obvious needs for the schools. This took care of building some new schools, renovating some other schools. It was really needed. It helped people in various parts of our county, and we have kept our word about that, those funds would be used exclusively for school construction and maintenance, and school purposes. So my position is, Mr. Chairman, and similar to yours, sounds like, if we're going to do this, it needs to be done in a way that our citizens can look at and say, yes, part of that money will go for this purpose, whatever purpose is selected, school security, whatever. But another part, a larger part, will go towards shifting our citizens' taxes from a property tax, which is just as paid by certain people in the county, a good portion of the people though, to sales tax. And the benefit of sales tax is people coming into the county or other counties. We would benefit from that through the sales tax. And I know when you guys ran this time, I ran almost four, well, three years ago, and the big topic when I ran was we're tired of increased taxes, having to pay more taxes. I think you folks who were out campaigning this time found that still to be pretty true. I bet you lost count of how many times you heard that. And to be true to that, to let our citizens know that we're listening to them, I think we need to be looking at ways that make sense and meet the common sense test of maybe we can shift some taxes from property taxes, which you guys I know sitting here in this room pay, I know I pay a lot of property taxes, or a substantial amount it seems like to be, on my limited budget. Shift some of that to sales tax, and I think we all could benefit from it. And that's the only way I would support this referendum, and I would get out and work to help it pass on that basis, if we could assure our citizens that we're really doing this to reduce your property tax. And is there a preference for this? What is it? Is not preference, is there a, what's the word I'm looking for? Just help me, you're good with words?
Can help you with this.
Nick, when you have something that happens and you use that to base something that...
Precedent.
Precedent, that's it. Who said that?
Will.
Will, thank you, Will. Is there a precedent for this? Absolutely. There was an article in the Journal, which is the Winston-Salem paper, most of it I don't even pay much attention to, but this caught my attention, and that they are proposing a quarter cent sales tax to be used exclusively to reduce property taxes in Forsyth County. That's a pretty serious precedent. I mean, that's certainly worth looking at. But I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman, because I know Commissioner Yance, he probably needs about thirty minutes to say.
I don't need thirty. Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Yance?
Yeah, I'll keep this brief. We've talked about this, and there's several different ways I look at it. And to your point, I think there is some interest in utilizing some of that funding for, in lieu of property taxes going forward. I think Commissioner Nicholson had mentioned that in his comments when we spoke about it. So there's definitely some interest, but let's not lose fact that all it would take would be three people sitting on this board to change that at any point in time. So that's real, and that's the way it would be. Yes, it's our word, and committing to that going forward, again, it's still our word. But I will also say that I've had a lot of people contact me on both sides of this, and I represent constituents on both sides. And to me, this is just a really simple way to put it out there and let the voters vote up or down on it, yes or no. To me, it's no harm unless somebody wants to spend a bunch of money and funds to, because you're so adamantly against it, or the other side. We put it out there, and then it's a consumption tax that people can decide, do I want to purchase that and pay the extra twenty-five cent on the hundred dollars I'm getting ready to spend? It's pretty simple, I think, for me. And again, I would entertain using some of that funding in lieu of the property tax. Obviously, I think you've got to be very careful. There's going to be people that think that it is going to offset the property tax completely. That's false, and people need to understand this is a very small portion, and at the end of the day, you would see a very small portion come off your property tax if you put the whole amount to it. I think I spoke to that in the last meeting. So that's about all I have on it right now.
Thank you, sir. With this due to the time right there, we've got to move into action next meeting there.
I've got a couple more comments.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Morris, go ahead.
What they were just saying basically, and Commissioner Walker, whenever the public votes on this, they've already decided they want to change the ratio of property to the sales tax. I mean, there isn't any decision to make after that. They've done it. They've said that we're going to pay more sales tax, and so we're paying a greater portion of sales tax compared to property tax than we were to start with. So you would think logically, anybody that hates property tax would probably want to support the sales tax, because potentially, you know, that puts more revenue in, and you're going to still have to fund these requirements, whatever they happen to be, but you'll be funding more of them with sales tax than you would with, at a greater percentage of sales tax than you were before you made the change. So, but as far as setting tax rates or tax levels for either sales tax, first of all, we don't know what the sales tax is going to produce till we actually have the sales. So that's an unknown as we go into the budget, and we figure that out about time we get to the budget. And so, and then we don't know what the requirements are going to be, what the budget request is going to be until we get it. So the idea that you're going to make proclamations about, I'm going to set the tax levels at this level on property tax and this much on sales tax without giving that sales tax is just an estimate, you know, that's why I don't want to get into this discussion of offsetting and guaranteeing I'm going to reduce one if I do the other, because, like I said, you don't have a crystal ball. You don't know what the budget request is going to be, what requirements are going to pop up that you're not familiar with, or you're not aware of at this time. And so to me, it's premature, but I think we're safe. You know, I feel comfortable telling people that I'm going to fund this school security stuff with whichever tax I have to fund it with. And I'd prefer to fund it with more sales tax and less property tax, you know? And so that would be my argument for voting for the referendum. But, and so, you know, we could even word the resolution and, you know, put something, you know, talking about changing the ratio of sales to property tax, I don't think would be prohibited by any statute in the resolution. You're just, all you're doing is advertising what it does when you make that change, you know? So that's not, I wouldn't think that would be prohibited. We could check on it. But the resolution needs to be worded very carefully about that subject and then how we're going to spend the revenue, or the people will not vote for it, I don't think. So I'm good with trying to do a draft resolution next time if that's what the board wants to do, or whatever. That's all I have on the subject for tonight.
Commissioner Walker?
Are we even far enough along, and I think you referenced this earlier, Mr. Chairman, to attempt a draft resolution at this point? Is there enough consensus on the board at this time? Plus, we're missing a member this evening for this discussion, to even attempt to pull together a referendum at this time?
We'd have to move quickly. Time's closing up fast, that's for sure.
You'd want to see a draft resolution at your next meeting if you're even thinking about it, because you'd want a chance to look at it, make any suggested changes that could be brought back to you, because we'd have to get it approved on December ninth to be able to get it to the state by December twentieth. So you'd want to at least see something in front of you next time if you're considering it to look at.
Well, one thing, and I could use some clarification on this particular point from Commissioner Morris, he said he would not support it unless every penny of it went toward the school security and school needs. I'm saying that I will not support it unless a substantial portion of it, the majority amount really, goes toward shifting the tax burden of our citizens from property tax to sales tax. So right there, what do you do with that? And you're saying, I think, Mr. Chairman, that you're coming around more toward, and Commissioner Yance might have suggested this as well, toward looking at a portion of it, hopefully a substantial portion, goes toward shifting the property tax, although Commissioner Yance looks at it as a minor amount, at least no matter what size it is, it's a step in the right direction. So what do you do with the board with this particular set of views? How do you bring any of this together?
Do you see why I said at the beginning, just balled up and talked the trash?
I don't even understand how you do that. How do you make a property tax argument of what you're going to do? I mean, you don't know what the tax requirement's going to be. You'd have to have some kind of baseline, I guess, or, you know...
You can always project, but that don't ever, that's not actual money. That's not a way to do anything.
We do a lot of the county's business on projections, how much our tax revenues will be on any given year. And we know about what sales tax we get each year. Julia and I were talking during the recess a little bit ago about a penny of property tax equals about three hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. I knew it was three hundred and some thousand. But you can say, it appears, and it would be a projection, there's no way we could pin this down precisely, but it appears, given historical numbers, that it may have a certain amount of impact on our tax rate. It could be a penny, it could be two pennies. But I just don't see where things are right now. If we can't get together on this, I don't see how we can put something out to the public for them to approve.
Well, by default, it's automatically going to impact the property tax if you increase the sales tax. But when you start trying to define it any further than that before you get a budget request, I don't even know how you do that, to be honest, you know? Unless you just say, well, the property, the baseline is what the current property tax rate is, and I'm going to reduce that rate. Well, then you've set the tax for the next budget without even knowing what the budget request is. So to me, I just, I can't understand how you even do that, other than just in principle.
Okay, let's take the opposite of that then, Commissioner Morris. Let's look at your view. You're saying we've got, I've got it right here in my information I brought with me, to the meeting, the list of needs, perceived needs of the schools. Now, are you going to, how many of those needs are you going to fund or tell them we are going to attempt to fund if we don't know how much we'll be getting from the sales
I'm funding them with either tax, if you heard me to start with. I'm going to fund those requirements with whatever tax I get from property or sales tax combined. You know, I'm not making, I'm just saying, a logical thing to try to get the people to vote for this would be to say that we'll maybe take that amount of revenue that's projected that we're going to get from the additional quarter cent and put that toward school security. That way, they know you're not just mixing it with the general fund. But that's really all you can do, given the statute limits you on what you can promise and guarantee and everything.
Very little can be guaranteed, from what I've...
Yeah, nothing can.
The other thing, too, you keep mentioning school security. I saw a request from the school board, and I respect that. Any information's useful. But ongoing, I've relied on our sheriff to identify school security needs and how much funding there needs to be, because he's the person that's spent his life pretty much in law enforcement and should know more about security than most of us. And I rely heavily on him and his view toward how much school security we need to be funding.
I do the same thing.
And he presented a proposal that all of us agreed to at his past budget. I thought we'd already dealt with this. I thought we had it pretty well locked in, and now it's kind of up in the air again.
Not really. We have an SRO in every school, which is what I insisted on, and he agreed with it. That was a good idea. But we don't live in a static environment. You know, we have grants that come and fund SROs, we have grants that go away, you know? And so every year's a new, a whole new look at this to see what, you know, what's available, what's not available, and how are we going to do this next year? We going to do it the same way we did it last year? If you have a grant to do it this year and you don't have it the next year, then you've got to look at a different way to fund that requirement. You know, my point is that requirement, you know, before you do a budget, you have to understand what it is you want to fund, and what's the real requirement. So we learn, we figure out what the requirements are, and then we fund them at whatever level. Hopefully, we fund it within the current tax structure.
And that's why there's five of us. You have one view, I have a view, the three others have their view, and no matter what the issue is or the timing of it, it's a matter of how those five views come together, and hopefully, it's always in the best interest of our citizens. Now, you're talking about school security. Let's just stick with that one particular issue just for a little bit. And school security obviously is important, but there's all these other needs for the county. There's our county employees. How much does it take to be a responsible employer? How much, how does this one particular need, whatever it is, compare with all the other needs of the county at any given time? So if we go out and sell something to the public on a basis of, let's say, school security, one thing, too, I don't want to alarm our citizens in thinking that we're deficient with school security, because we're probably doing better than a lot of counties around us in this area with school security. So I don't want to, number one, I don't want to unnecessarily alarm them by putting it out as a critical issue, because I think we're really covering a lot of bases currently, and I don't want the wrong people getting the idea that we're concerned about school security either. So there's a lot of questions. We just keep getting more and more questions about this. I think we just need to table it to a future time, maybe another election cycle.
I guess what we do is just get him put on action next meeting there, and we can vote for tonight. We'll just move on to that.
You know, I don't think we're sending a signal our school security's not good by doing this. We're just talking about how we're going to continue to keep it at the level it's at. You know, one approach we could take to this is just throw all the, since the statute doesn't allow us to specify how we're going to spend this or guarantee it, why don't we just put on the resolution, voters, would you rather have a different ratio of sales to property tax? Would you rather pay more sales tax or have more sales tax in the equation, or you just want to let property tax carry everything? You know, maybe that, maybe they'll make a decision based on that. Maybe that's something that, if you explain it properly, that a lot of people feel strongly about. I know everybody hates property tax, you know? Hates having to pay any more than they need to. So, you know, maybe we just say, would you prefer to pace, have the ratio of sales tax to property tax different, which by definition relieves the burden on property tax.
Forsyth County appears to be doing.
All right. Y'all figure out the resolution, though. What'd you say, Julie?
You know, when the home carmelers went away, which was two million dollars, the tax rate was not ready.
Mm-hmm, exactly. Exactly. I'm going to get on that soapbox, Will.
So we're going to put on action. You want me to work with the county attorney's office and have some, you want like a couple of resolution options, kind of trying to encompass what you're discussing?
I'd say so. We can go ahead and talk about it then, then put it to a vote, and if it goes through, we can meet later on before this thing goes on the ballot, when all of us come to consensus here, what we want to do with it.
Okay.
Is everybody good with that?
I understand what you said.
No, we're going to go ahead and get this, they're going to bring some stuff to us to read. Go ahead and get on action. If it's something that goes through between us, we can actually have meetings between that and voting time to what we're going to tell the public. that and voting time to what we're gonna tell the public we're using this money for.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we could do that.
We're gonna bring you a couple of resolutions, several resolutions.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our action agenda. Item A, the LKC engineering, have a motion?
Vote to approve LKC engineering.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ours. Item B, the Friends of the Shelter funding request. I believe we have Dr. Cowan here, is that correct?
Lizley Staples.
Lizley Staples is here to answer any questions.
Good evening. I would like to take a short review of exactly what we're asking for and what we're not asking for, so we're all clear on what you're going to approve or not approve. I'd just like to say that what we're asking for is a temporary financial assistance to get open, up and running. That's a general idea. What we gave you was our operating budget, and we outlined our best estimate of where our income was coming from, what we're gonna spend our money on, and we realized that we were gonna have trouble getting operating grants, which we're gonna rely on without being open, and that we were also gonna have trouble getting fundraising up and running, because we're gonna need sustaining fundraisers, sustaining donors, so we're gonna need some of that. That we were stuck in a place where we couldn't get open, because we really used all our capital campaign to build the building, and we were kinda stuck. So, if we could get open and up and running, then we could then build our coffers and figure out how to work on our expenses and trim them, and basically live with our own means, but that's what we're asking for. We're asking for temporary, a year, maybe two, to get us over the hump, so we've got enough committed cash. We can't hire somebody without a commitment. It would be irresponsible for us to go out and hire somebody now. We don't have any money to pay anybody, so we're sort of catch 22 here, we're stuck. So, we want you to ask, actually approve a portion of your budget, $49,602, to give us some financial assistance to open up the adoption center, to sit down and work with Mike Marshall and figure out how we're gonna work together, and then start pumping up our own coffers, and so we can be self-sustaining over the next couple of years.
Any questions for you? Have a vote on this.
I have one question, yeah. Should we vote on it without the full board being here, you guys think, or not? Think so?
Yes, sir. I do. Interested in the other county.
I prefer not to, personally, unless it's an urgent requirement that it be approved tonight.
Well, if we don't get any money tonight, then it just moves it down the road, and we have to keep building it. So, we're just trying to jumpstart what we're doing.
I'll tell you, what is, how's the board feeling? You said you'd like to move it. What would you like to do?
I'd like to discuss it some tonight, too, though.
Okay.
Even if we move it.
I'm comfortable in going ahead and dealing with it. All along, I've said, and I thought we should help these folks get their operation up and going. It helps the sheriff with what he's doing with animal control, it helps the county by providing a service to our citizens that's a useful and needed service. So, I'm ready to go ahead, and I've said, this is about the amount that I had in mind from the beginning of funding the group initially, to try to help them get going. So, I'm on board, I'm ready to go.
Commissioner Hartz.
I can do the other way. I mean, I'm ready to vote on it tonight, but if we wanna wait, so we have all five, that's certainly...
If you wanna do it tonight, I'm okay, too. I just thought it's kinda better, you know, when you vote on money issues, to have a full board, but it's not mandatory, so...
Honestly, on this one here, because we're talking about a pretty good-sized sum right there, I'd kinda like to, for Commissioner Menon Hall to be back here at the next meeting and vote on it.
We can still discuss it tonight.
We still discussed it, not sure.
And I won't see that as a heavy-duty game changer, but I'm just wanting to see these people go ahead and start providing their service and trying to help them move in that direction. And I really thank their support, whether Commissioner Menon Hall's here or not, and I respect the fact that it'd be good to have a five-person board, but we don't live in a perfect world. There's gonna be times, there may be another one, I was out next meeting, who knows, are we gonna delay it again?
I was just saying that, because it's not, we need to do it, but it's not like an urgent requirement tonight. It's not gonna make a big difference if it's two weeks later, I wouldn't think. But I'm good with tonight, if you guys wanna do it tonight, whatever, either way, you know?
Let's go ahead and discussion, and I guess we can make it, have a discussion. Who'd like to start?
I'll start. I'm leaning in favor of doing this as well. As I've stated before, I think I've already said that before, but this, to me, this is, first of all, it's an inherent county function to do this, so what they're doing is basically some of our work for us. If the Foss group doesn't do this, then the county has to do it. So, and we've sent a signal already by giving them the land over there at a really good price and everything, that we're, we approved this concept of Foss running an adoption center, and with details to be worked out about how that works with animal control. So, you know, so I think we've kinda bought in already. I think with the commitment we've already made, this amount that they're requesting to kinda jumpstart the program is not unreasonable, because, like I said, they're kinda performing the county function in the first place. And what we've got here, we've got basically an eight-month schedule, an eight-month projected budget. Whenever we get to the budget cycle that's coming up, we will have actual information. We can figure out if this budget projection's good, if it's gonna work. And then, we would require you guys, like anybody else, to put a budget request in for the next budget that we approve, and that would be based, I would think, on actual data, and whether you're high, low, or in the middle, whatever, with your projections. The, I think I've been told that your objective, first of all, you really didn't ever intend to come and ask for this, but as I said earlier, I wasn't really surprised that you sort of needed to, to get something like this off the ground, this being run by donations and so forth. But the, I think it's in all our best interests to have this, have this thing be successful and get started off with the investment we've already made in it. So, I agree with the idea of you guys hopefully being able, through grants and fundraising, to run it without the county in the future, and I think we actually need to start looking at that at the next budget cycle. We don't need to guarantee you another year right now. We just need to say, we'll do it and get you to the next budget cycle, and we'll look at the actual information, and then we'll make a decision then about what we do for the following year. So, the, one other point I wrote down in my notes here that I hadn't thought of before until this week, but we need to kinda think of this in, from a strategic, long-term perspective. Right now, we have the sheriff's department running animal control. That is not the case in some counties, and then in a lot of other counties, the sheriff does a portion of animal control, but they do not operate the shelters, because it'd be very easily to make the argument that operating an animal shelter is not law enforcement. Doing investigations, doing, you know, enforcement things out in the community, that would qualify, I think, as law enforcement. But it'd be very easy for, one of these days, Mike's gonna either retire or decide not to run, or sheriff, and we're gonna have new sheriff candidates, and we may get a sheriff that immediately campaigns on not doing animal shelter. So, any structure we have in place that would help us, you know, in the future, work jointly with you guys and with the county, given, you know, unknown, what unknowns are with things like that in the future, I think it's worth our investment. So, I'm gonna be supportive of it, night or next week, whichever time we vote on it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, sir. Actually, I agree with a good part of what Commissioner Morris was saying, and I'm ready to vote on it as well. We've been dealing with this for a while. I know that it's a controversial issue in a way, because there are some folks who don't think we should give you anything, and there's others who thinks this is just a portion of the county, of support that should come from the county. So, I'm trying to look at it as what is reasonable and prudent in this particular situation. Lastly, one thing that caught my attention was when you said you're gonna be actively seeking grants, and if you can get your doors open and get going, have this facility operating, it's gonna be a lot easier to secure grants. And I would hope by the time, if it even comes again, when you need further, possibly feel like you need further county assistance, that there'll be enough grants and community support in place to offset that need for any assistance from the county. And I know you've spent a lot of money on your facility, you probably spent more than you thought you were going to spend, and now it's there, and it's ready to go. You just need some people to help operate it, and need some supplies, and you need some money to kinda pound the puff with, and I'm willing to help you, and I'm willing to do it tonight.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Yance.
Yeah, thank you for coming out tonight. Just have a very quick question, and I won't spend a lot of your time, but if the county decides to partner with Foss in this monetary support, would Foss be willing to be completely transparent with their budget?
Oh, absolutely. We're 501(c)(3), everything's public.
Okay, all right.
Regardless of whether you fund us...
Right, 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 right. I just wanna make sure that there's, I wanna make sure that if there's truly a partnership, there's a partnership on both sides, and that we're communicating back and forth, and we understand where the funds are going, so... That's the only question I have.
Thank you, sir. With this right here, I'd kinda like to see a one-time thing to get these doors open. That's what I'm kinda looking at, but with the taxpayers' monies being used, and here's what I'm kinda proposing, do it one-time thing, see it get open. Would y'all be willing to share where the $452,000 went to, to get this thing up and going?
Sure, it's, again, all of that's public data, one way or the other. It's public data now. You can go read our tax returns and come look at the books and see where all the money went, and what it was spent on, and that's all public information, regardless of how you vote.
And how much is it gonna cost to finish everything at the state spec area?
Oh, we're basically done now.
Okay. All the outside's been sealed and everything?
Yeah, all of that, yeah. We've got to, we've got to actually get to an operating level to call Lindsay back in, so we're kinda, again, we're, we have to get somebody hired, we have to have, you know, our guidelines written up, so we're kind of like chicken and egg-ing here.
So, even the furnishings and everything's inside now?
Not all of it, no.
Okay.
No, but that's going on right now in parallel. So, we have Amazon wish lists and corona bed funding and letters going out, so we'll continue to work on getting it and getting people to donate all of their materials and donate office equipment, donate computers. That's underway right now. So, that will go on regardless.
And from what you're seeing right now, when do you think you'll have it available to hire?
Available to hire?
Yeah.
If I get a funding commitment, then we'll get a job description out on the street within a few weeks. I mean, we've already drafted one up, but until we have a commitment to go out and put something out on the street, we'll, we have a job description out, we'll get somebody hired ASAP.
Whether you vote tonight or next time, you'll have to do a service agreement, because it's a nonprofit. So, whatever specifications you lay out in, is that a one-time funding, or is it a, you know, annual, depending on the budget, that we've needed to put something in place?
It's a service agreement. I taught the care with the school government. We would have to have a service agreement, because they are a nonprofit, and it had specified what we're spending, what the board is having, what they're gonna spend the monies on, and they would have to report to the board quarterly on how they spent the money. But that's just, I just asked that, because I had a session on nonprofits, funding nonprofits, and she said that's what we would have to do, is a service that county already does, so we can't fund a nonprofit, but you would have to have a service agreement in place.
Your budget amendment, too, right?
Yeah.
And Nick, have you seen the amendment and reinstated grant lease agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything on there with what we're doing that needed to be changed in this?
No, and I spoke with Ty earlier tonight. He's reviewed it all, and it's our opinion that the lease can stay as it is, the county isn't taking over the operation in any ways, the lease is fine as is. He did say, like you said, that there needs to be a contract or service agreement with Foss to provide for the books, quarterly reports, that kind of thing.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Can you make a motion?
I quickly could, but you see where all the money was being spent. Is that something you can get to us pretty quick, or?
Were the $49,602s...
No, the $452,000.
It's on the books, yeah, I can, if you want me, I could print out tax returns and send you information.
Of course, I'd like to question, but it's all, just the next meeting. I'd like to do just a little bit more research, if that's okay with everybody.
As I said earlier, I have no objection either way, I mean...
Can we do it in action at the next meeting then? And so, with that, next meeting then, we would have the service agreement, budget amendment, and anything...
Everything we're gonna go forward.
And then we just make a, well, we're not gonna prove it till then anyway, even if we wait, so...
Right.
As long as we don't have to do discussion then, actually.
Right.
But really, six, one, half thousand, other than, I guess.
I think, if I may, I think it would be good for the Friends of the Shelter group to know if we're trying to work it out to help them get their facility up and operating. And I think there's some details that need to be worked out, the service agreement, and question about transparency, but I think it would be good for them to know if there's interest on this board, to helping them move forward with what they're attempting to do. And I'd like to be able to have that known at this meeting. I don't foresee any deal breakers, far as anything I've heard this evening or at other times. I know we don't live in a perfect world, it's not a perfect situation, but we're trying to do the best we can with what we have to work with, and the best we can as much as possible for all involved, and I would like for them to know if there is interest or support on this board in helping them proceed with their project.
Commissioner Hartz.
I mean, I'll just say, I think there's interest, because we're willing to move it to action at the next meeting, but I will, I will never commit, one way or another, in this meeting, how I'm gonna vote. I mean, I'm just not willing to do that. There's too many things that could happen either way to, between now and the next meeting. There may be new information that comes to light, things of that nature. I'm not willing to commit.
And that could happen to any of us, so...
Sure, I'm just...
I've been pretty much having this same position since early in the process, to give them an initial amount to help them get the doors open, and that's where I am now. But I'm saying, too, Commissioner Yance, that something totally unforeseen could cause me to have to do it otherwise as well. I don't expect that, but, you know, things can happen. But I do support what they're trying to do. They work very hard to have what they have there, that facility in place. They've accomplished something good, they've accomplished something they should be proud of, because it's, you know, to create a facility, almost a half million dollars from citizens, from fundraisers, from donations, that's quite an accomplishment. The county did help, we gave the land and helped you get the water and sewer, but you guys have done to build it, and that was a good accomplishment. Proud for you for what you've done.
Barring any red flags that pop up, I'm certainly supportive of what they're doing. We'll vote for giving them this money to get started at the next meeting. We need to be prepared to do it at the next meeting and have all the agreements and everything in place, I think, to do that, so it doesn't get delayed two more weeks.
Our assistant county manager has one question for the board.
I wanna be sure we have what you need in front of you next time, so I'd like to be, clarify exactly what you want in the service agreement, like, are we committing to a one-year funding of the $49,602, I think, is the amount, or 602? $49,602? Are you committing to more? I mean, just kinda so we can, when we write that up, everything's in it when it comes back to you. back to you for, to be on action the next time, and the amount for the budget amendment?
I definitely would not support another year till we do that. I would just support this 49.
A one-year service agreement.
It's a one-time.
With the quarterly.
They just get in the budget cycle then and make a budget request if they need.
And we're all okay with the $49,602 amount for the service agreement and the budget amendment?
I am.
Okay, I just want to make sure, $49,602.
Okay. All right, we're good. Thank you, Lindsay.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right, we'll move on to item C, the State's County Health Department vaccine fee schedule, and there is an update on one item on the new list.
Hepatitis A.
Received before the meeting here.
Yeah, and I updated it in your online agenda, too. It's in your attachment. It's the, they had an increase to the hepatitis A vaccine due to a vendor price increase. So she just wanted to update that before we voted on it, so she'd get the correct vaccine fee schedule in.
Okay, we have the correct fees in the schedule there. Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
I'm sorry, I was.
Item C, the vaccine fee schedule.
Plugged them over.
Okay. Do they have a second motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Booze. The PTRDC appointment request. Commissioner Rick Morris was nominated at the last meeting to serve on the PTRDC. I'll open the floor to any further nominations.
The nominations reclosed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I will poll the board.
Morris.
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 Morris. I have me the finance options for fiscal year 1920. Have a motion on this?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Booze.
I just want to clarify that we're going with the, one that was recommended by Finance Director Julia Edwards and Glenn DePruitt with the First National Bank, which is to clarify what you voted on.
And final item, the Animal Control Advisory Board revised ordinance request. Have a motion on this?
One more, sorry.
Yeah.
That's the one with the cat-dog that you discussed with Ms. Loy that's here, and the, the board discussed that they were okay with if you wanted to remove the cats portion of that housing ordinance. Also, the sheriff was okay with that. So that was something Commissioner Walker was really concerned about, didn't really want that wording on the ordinance. So I didn't know if you wanted to talk about that a little bit before, because right now it's, it's worded with the cats in there. But they're okay, the board is okay, the Animal Control Advisory Board's okay with removing it as is, the sheriff.
I'll make a motion that we approve it with a cat provision or component of it removed.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Booze.
And, and Mr. Chairman, me, I had one thing for the citizens who read this over and say, oh, my gosh, this is 11 pages of what it takes to own a dog or a cat. I, I understand, and I also discussed this with Ms. Loy, and I've discussed it with the sheriff at other times. This ordinance is not to be people around with. The first thing is a warning, unless it's just very flagrant. If someone is bending the rules, they might get a warning that they need to change some things, put their dog in a shade, whatever. And that's the basis, and I'm willing to go along with it for now.
Okay.
Also, if I may, I saw this is pretty extensive. If I were thinking about adopting a cat or a dog, and you had 11 pages of animal control and what it takes to adopt an animal, have an animal, it may be intimidating. I wondered if at some point we could simplify this and, and make it a little easier to understand and a little easier for the average person to deal with.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meet in adjournment.
I'm trying.
Hold on, let me turn everything off.
I'm trying to get a feral cat.